He's kind of like oddly in a fifty-fifty, he's like, you know, it's long, it's be like, tell people this is what they have to do.
Testing audio, check, check.
Yes.
That's an easy part.
Check testing.
There's now fifteen to ten years.
It's grown, it's been growing while you were, while you were away.
There's fourteen, fourteen and fifteen, yeah.
Hello to those of you who are on Zoom, not sure if you can hear me, the city internet is down at the moment and we're trying to get it fixed. So I am joining you via cell reception to just let you know that we're working on a solution and I'll try to check in with you in about five minutes and keep you posted. The city council meeting is not happening yet, we're just waiting for the, for the technical difficulties to get sort of starting with us. I can hear you.
Hello Zoom attendees. I am sorry to tell you that we have an internet outage at City Hall and we're not able to get the Zoom working. So what we are planning to do is to allow the folks who are at the meeting to make public comments. And we're going to go through each action item and continue each one till the next meeting. So we won't take any action tonight because the Zoom is not functional. I really apologize for these difficulties. And just know that even though we won't be able to comment tonight, every item will be continued to the next meeting so you'll have another opportunity. Thank you.
A border basically opening up for humanitarian assistance, release of hostages, and calls for a permanent solution in that region. The ceasefire obviously is not a permanent solution. It's just a solution to stop the violence for the moment. But the long-term solution has to be a two-state. It seems consistent since 1948, when the United Nations first took a position on this. The permanent solution is a two-state solution. And that's what this resolution calls for, to get to that point, as well as a general statement of opposing all forms of antisemitism, Islamophobia, racism, bigotry, and advocating for the dignity and safety of all residents in all the communities. If the ultimately, if the council has approved this resolution, it would be distributed not only among the mayors and council members within Sonoma County, but also our representatives at the state, the governor, our federal representatives, and the president. That's a quick overview, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions?
I just asked, is Zoom back up again now?
It appears so.
If it is, can we go back to actually voting or no?
I'm not able to access Zoom at this moment. You are? I think we already made an announcement to the folks on Zoom that we were going to continue the item to the next meeting and most of them left. So I wouldn't feel comfortable with the voting.
Okay.
But we will, at this time, open it up to public comment. Before we start, I just want to thank you so much for your patience. I can tell what an important issue this is to you and that you're still here and sticking with us through all these difficulties. So we're going to allow folks who are here to speak. I have comment cards, so I will... Everyone who submitted one of these, I'll call you up. And if you didn't submit one, I'll give you a chance to comment after these. All right, Julie Chason from Sonoma County. Can we, before we begin, can we have a raise of hands of how many people are planning to speak? Just so we can see how many folks there are. Okay, I think we can do three minutes per person. It's not too many people. All right, thank you.
Hi, I want to really express my appreciation for this opportunity to be here and for your work on a resolution. And I want to state my strongest encouragement to vote for an immediate and permanent ceasefire. And I want to share a little bit of my background. I grew up knowing that I was lacking in an extended family because of most of my Jewish extended family were killed during World War II. And I was always wondering as a child, how did the world let this happen? How did the world, how did the immediate community members of my family, how did they, you know, turn people in for being Jewish or just look the other way? How did the politicians, how did they not stop it? You know, and how did people or the international community not stop the violence, the murder? And I feel like in the past few months, I've been seeing... Oh yeah, I also grew up seeing films of the mass graves and the starving people. And now I feel the past few months, I've been seeing that, but live and in color. With the disease, the starvation, the mass executions, bombings, the snipers. And I'm watching my country not only look the, not just look the other way, aid it. Aid it. And it's so painful to see that. It is so painful. And since we have a president and most of our Congress is not... Maybe it doesn't feel politically expedient to support a ceasefire for whatever reason, but they're not. And it's kind of unfathomable to me. And in honor of my ancestors, I say, please support a permanent ceasefire immediately. And I would like to see a release of all captives, Israeli and Palestinians that are being held without charges in Israel, including many children. And I also want to share that I used to play in a band here in Sonoma County called Salam Shalom. And we consisted of Jews, Israelis, Palestinians, Arabs from other countries. Did I say Christians? And we played music of the Arab and Jewish diaspora. And we played all of Sonoma County piece.
Thirty seconds.
Okay, and I, and after that time, I continued to study Arabic music. And I had so much contact with so many amazing Arab people, Palestinian people. And I just wish that we can take this opportunity of this horror and this crisis to really connect with each other. And any of my Jewish brothers and sisters that feel at all that their safety is compromised when people call for a ceasefire, please come meet some of my Palestinian friends, please. I only get hospitality and love from all of the Arab people that I've met in all of these years. And the people that are gathering in the past few months are just some of the most incredible, beautiful people. And so I say this to anyone that fears that empowering and caring about a free Palestine is somehow anti-Jewish. It's just not. We'll all be safer, we'll really all be safer when we care for each other and across boundaries and religions. So thank you so much.
Just a quick note, Kevin, I can't see the time on here, so if you can keep track of it for me.
I just brought up a different timer. We're having technical difficulties with the timer. You can believe that.
Of course we are. Okay, thank you. Next would be Charles Clip.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity. Mine's going to be shorter, I think. The, I read the resolution, which I believe is, you know, two sentences. It's a short resolution. And the part, I wish that you guys would add to this resolution, the immediate release of the hostages. Because your resolution is talking about the short, the immediate change, which you're calling for a ceasefire. And I think as part of that ceasefire, there needs to be a release of all hostages. So that's my main point. And some reference to what has been said before. Just one thing, when you were giving the history, and I appreciate that you're doing that, Damian. When you mentioned in '48 that there was a resolution, the UN resolution created this, having two states, a Palestinian and a Jewish state. And the Jewish state, the Jews accepted that. It was the, at that time, the Arabs and the Palestinians who did not accept it. That's why there wasn't two states to start, because it was declined by the Arabs. So there's a long history here that, I know it's longer than we're going to go into, but there were supposed to be two states. And as I said, the Jews accepted it, the Arabs did not. And I think there needs to be a distinction. The lady who spoke before me mentioned about that they're Palestinian friends and that they're, she's feeling love from them. And I think there needs to be a distinction between Palestinians and Hamas. Hamas has no love for Israel, no love for Jews. Their charter explicitly calls for the eradication of the Jewish state. That is, that has been their, since they were established, that has been their inner charter. So it is not, they are a danger to Israel, they are a danger to Jews. And, but they do not represent all Palestinians. So I think that's what I want to say about, please, the immediate release of hostages, I think should be part of any such resolution. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Teresa Muganam.
Hi. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. And my name is Teresa Muganam Walrath. And I'm a Christian Palestinian American born in Jerusalem, Palestine, months before the modern state of Israel was created. In 1948, my family fled the violence, the massacres near where we lived, committed by the underground Israeli terrorist organizations such as the Irgun, who killed Palestinians, forced them out of their homes, or frightened them so they could leave. My family fled to Jordan. And like the over 750,000 others who were displaced, all were never allowed to return to their homes. Over 500 villages of their, of their villages were systematically destroyed by the newly-created Israeli government. This is the root of the problem between Israelis and Palestinians. Today, there are about 7 million Palestinian refugees still living in refugee camps, waiting for justice, holding on to keys of homes they were forced out of, keys handed down from one refugee generation to the next. Israeli historians, Israeli historians such as Ilhan Pape and others, have written about the hidden Zionist goal to take all of historical Palestine and remove all its inhabitants, no matter how long it takes. It has been a slow genocide for my people for as long as I have been alive. It's what's happening in Gaza now, as I speak to you. I condemn violence against human beings, whether committed by Hamas or by the Israeli Defense Force, or any other person or government, including my own government. You must be aware that our government... You must be aware that our government is complicit in the war on Gaza, the killing of innocents going on now. Was that thirty seconds? Okay, I'll do this quickly. Nearly ten thousand children killed by weapons we apply with our attacks. What would it be like if every single school child in Qatadi and Roanoke Park was killed in the last three months? And that's only five thousand nine hundred and seventy kids here, not the ten thousand children killed in Gaza. This is absolutely horrifying and unacceptable. I believe the measure of our humanness is our ability to feel the pain and suffering of people we don't even know. Also that we do something to end their pain and suffering. I am here to ask you to call for a ceasefire in Gaza, to end the killing of other humans. Is that asking too much?
I'm so sorry, I don't want to cut you off, but we're a little over
I have two sentences, if you please, if you please. Some of you must have children and grandchildren as I do. Can you imagine them dead under the rubble? I can't. They are too precious to us. Palestinians are humans just like us. Please use the power you have to pressure for a ceasefire. We save our own humanness by helping to save others. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Um, next is Kamala Brown.
Hi, it's Kamala.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, I had it up and now it's gone. Um, hold on. Okay.
We can go to another speaker and
Sorry, no, no, I got it, I got it, I got it. Okay, hi. My name is Kamala Brown, and I'm a, I'm on the board of Congregation Ner Shalom here in Qatadi. Although I'm only speaking for myself tonight, I'm not speaking for our congregation. I love the Jewish people, and I am deeply committed to Jewish spiritual practice for myself and my family. In fact, my twins are having their Benimitzvah at the end of the month. I say this because I want to be clear that my love and connection to the Jewish people, my people, is lifelong and very deep. I have Israeli friends and family and have visited Israel a number of times. I believe in Israel's right to exist and even to defend itself. I believe that Israel deserves a secure future. I also believe that Palestinian lives matter and that the Palestinian people deserve a secure future full of self-determination and opportunities for their children. The unimaginable loss of life, especially of children, that the Israeli government is waging in Gaza right now, and the general humanitarian crisis cannot, in my opinion, be categorized as Israel defending itself. And in my opinion, it does not make Israel safer or Jews in the diaspora safer either. I believe that the only way forward for the safety and security and futures of everyone in the region is an immediate bilateral ceasefire and a resolution to the conflict based on diplomacy. We all know that this is something that is easy to say, especially from relative safety here in the US. But I think we must at least say it. I understand that the resolution, that a resolution coming from the city council is essentially just a statement and does not hold any binding power as local governments are not involved in international politics. But I think a statement is worth something. And if enough local governments make statements, our national government is more likely to listen. I urge you to pass the ceasefire resolution before you. There are seven million Jews in Israel and close to seven million Palestinians in Israel, Gaza, and the West Bank. None of those people are going anywhere. They have nowhere else to go. And ultimately, the only way forward is together in some fashion or another. And the longer this war continues, and the more people are killed, the harder that future becomes. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you for your comment. Um, next we have Zoe Kessler.
Hi, thank you so much for listening to us here today and considering this resolution. My name is Zoe Kessler. I'm a lifelong Sonoma County resident, and I am Jewish. I grew up among many Israelis. My family was very involved in the synagogue growing up. I was given a Jewish education. And my Hebrew name given to me is Chaya, which means life. And is sacred in Judaism, no matter who you are. I'm writing to you. I am speaking to you, representing myself not only as a Jew, but just someone with a working brain and a heart that can see the crimes against humanity that Israel has committed in the name of Jewish safety is absolutely wrong. This is a siege and barbaric conquering to obtain land and a brutal genocide. And a Holocaust, a Holocaust of the Palestinian people. We are witnessing a replay of what the Nazis did to Jews and other marginalized groups in Europe. The only difference is we don't need gas chambers now because we have American-made bombs that our tax money is paying for. Tax money that this community needs for schools, for homelessness, and many other issues that affect the people of this community. As the world sees images of men, fathers, sons, doctors, educators, artists, and normal, good, kind human beings, just like us, being rounded up and stripped down and taken to their death. I am right, I am reminded of the images and history I was shown of Jews in concentration camps being sent to the, to the death chambers as a child. Our president and congressmen have failed us. Our UN representative has failed us. The world and our children are watching our government pay for and pluck the strings of this unforgivable atrocity.
Thirty seconds.
I I want to add that my heart is broken for Israeli people that lost family members and community members. Those people did not deserve to die. And I want to add that those hostages deserve to be brought back home. But this is wrong, please just do the right thing. We need to stop this genocide from happening. So I'm just urging you to listen to this call that this is, this is not in going to make Jews safer. It's not going to make Israelis safer. This has been going on for a lot longer than just October seventh. So thank you for listening and and the genocide now, and please adopt this resolution.
Thank you for your comment. Um, next we have Rabbi Erwin Keller.
Mayor, council members. My name is Rabbi Erwin Keller. I am and have been for the past fifteen years the rabbi at Congregation Ner Shalom located on the plaza here in Qatadi. I'm here today speaking on my own behalf and not that of Ner Shalom itself. In our congregation of one hundred forty households, there are a range of viewpoints. And we, like most Jews right now, are still experiencing shock from October seventh. And some of us land in different places as a result of the trauma. However, the membership of Ner Shalom knows that I am here today to speak in support of the resolution for ceasefire. I have received, I've received thirty emails from congregants since I announced this yesterday, twenty-nine of which expressed gratitude and relief. I want you to know that my own connection to the state of Israel is deep and lifelong. I first visited at age sixteen, and I have been there more times than I can count. I spent a year of my college education at the Hebrew University of Jerusalem. My husband is an Israeli citizen and served in the IDF. My elderly mother and father-in-law live there still. My husband's family lost two cousins on October seventh, murdered at Kibbutz Be'eri. I remain in a state of deep sadness, both from the events of October seventh and from the extremity of Israel's reprisal. A reprisal was foreseeable, but what we have seen in these three months goes far beyond anyone's imaginings. American Jews are expected to defend Israel. There is a connection that we have born of a shared history of suffering. It makes it difficult to break ranks. But the Babylonian Talmud instructs us that anyone who has the capacity to protest injustice that is being done by members of their household and does not do so, they are considered as if they too were committing the injustice. The same Talmud tells us holds for those who can but do not protest injustice in their town and those who can but do not protest injustice in the world. It is a Jewish obligation to speak out. I know that a ceasefire is not peace, but a ceasefire is not nothing.
Thirty seconds.
It is the first step in any solution, in any future prospect of peace. Every additional day of this war makes the chances for peace slimmer. Every additional day of this war is simply unbearable. Ceasefire cannot happen without world support, particularly without the push of the US government. And so before one more Palestinian child is killed and before one more Israeli soldier falls, let us pass this resolution and ask our government to be peacemakers. Let hostages be returned. Let the bombs be still. Let everyone begin to mourn the terrible losses. And after a good, long breath, let us find the new way, the new idea that can come as a blessing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Um, next is Jordan B.
Okay, hi, my name is Jordan. I would really like to urge us to have some nimbleness tonight. I know that we had an issue with Zoom, but because of the fact that by the end of this meeting, there will be a dozen more kids dead. This is an issue that goes before all business. This is life and death. And we do not have city council business. You know, all of this is totally secondary. So if there's a way that the vote can happen tonight and we can circle back to the thing that got slated for next time in order to act with the urgency that this this matter requires, I would really appreciate our ability to to be nimble that way. I am also Jewish. And I just want to mention today, so I'm in support of the ceasefire. I really urge you guys to act with the courage and humanity that this moment requires us to show up with. Today, the San Francisco Board of Supervisors approved the ceasefire resolution eight to three. And I would, I want to remind the council of, in September of, September twenty-fourth, nineteen, twenty-fifth, nineteen eighty-five, Sonoma County became the second only county in California to pass a resolution and a commitment to divest from apartheid South Africa. So this would not, let, let's continue to be progressive and let's continue to meet the moment where it needs to be met. And, you know, we're all global citizens. This is not only our business because we are all global citizens, but we are, as other people have said, we are directly number one funders of Israel's genocide against Palestinians. And, you know, I just want to bring attention to, like, I have teenage cousins who are seeing the, the, I mean, I'm, we're all seeing the most atrocious, horrific images, children, you know, dead, medical workers talking about having to perform amputations on children without anesthesia. Women, women having to have C-sections without anesthesia.
Thirty seconds.
You know, my teenage cousins are seeing this. And if they see us do nothing, the cynicism that that sows in this generation is going to have lifelong ramifications. And our representatives, you know, Mike Thompson, Jared Huffman, our president, our senators are ignoring us despite the fact that this is the largest mass mobilization of anti-war sentiments since Vietnam War. And we need our city council to join us in putting pressure on our representatives from below. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment. I'd like to just respond briefly in, on the advice of the, our council, I don't believe that we can take action tonight because it's stated in our agenda that folks would be able to participate by Zoom. But I will be checking with the other folks on the council to see if if we could perhaps schedule a special meeting due to the urgency of this issue to get it done sooner. I'm not a hundred percent sure if we'll be able to do that, but I'm going to try. Okay. And next commenter is Sarah Sauce.
Hello, I am a Jewish person raised, born and raised in Sonoma County, born and raised in the Jewish community of Sonoma County. And I'd like to say that it is imperative that we do not stay silent while the US aids Israel in the genocide of Palestinians. We've seen Davis support a ceasefire resolution, Oakland support a ceasefire resolution, and we just saw San Francisco support a ceasefire resolution. And so the city of Qatadi can do that as well. Thank you.
Thank you for commenting. At this point, I'd like to open up to anyone else in the audience who did not submit a comment card. If there's anyone additionally who would like to speak, now's your time.
I'm Carol Williams, and I'm a Qatadi resident. I just want to say how moved I've been by all the comments that people have made. They've been very eloquent and very heartfelt. I don't really have anything more to add except to say that I think it's very important for the city of Qatadi to support this resolution. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jim Berchers, and I also just wanted to thank you for having this on the agenda. And I'm here to speak in support of the resolution and in support of the others who have made very eloquent comments about the resolution. We need a ceasefire, we need it urgently. You know, we've, as you know, we've got a million, two, over two million people whose lives, I mean, we've lost over twenty-two thousand lives already. Lots of the suffering of the children and of all the people in Gaza has just been tremendous. And after all the horrific and after all the violence that we've seen, we really need the ceasefire. We need to stop, we need to stop the genocide so that we can move forward with a different future. We've seen that over eighty-five percent of the population of Gaza are displaced. They're being denied access to clean water, access to food. People are literally starving every day now. So that's the urgency here. And as they're also being bombed and, you know, just the other day, another fifty people, another sixty people, mainly women and children huddling in houses under the rubble now. And we're just seeing this every day. So and as, as has been mentioned, we are paying for it. So it is important that we stand up, take a stand, oppose it, call for the ceasefire. And I think in regaining our humanity and standing up, the sooner we act and the more we act, I think we're all going to be glad that we're taking more actions. So I appreciate your taking action. Thank you.
Hi, Adrian Lobby, Qatadi resident. I'm glad that you're thinking of a special meeting. I was moved by Jordan. I think it's, it is so urgent. It is every day, really another thousand people. Every time I hear the number, it's up by a thousand. I want a wordsmith because I'm that kind of person. So I think we should put genocide in this resolution. I think we should put into military aid from the US. I think we should call for a permanent ceasefire. And I certainly don't think that this solution is useful anymore. I think it's been overtaken by history because of all the settler colonials that have moved into the West Bank. I don't think it's possible. I think we have to talk about a, an area where there is one government that is equal to all, the same kind of government we try to have here. And I have had some discussions with people about Hamas lately and, well, what are they supposed to do? And for me, it does not feel like a war. It feels like carnage. It feels like one side has so much power and so much bombs and so much, so much. And the other side is, I don't know, hiding in tunnels or something and certainly don't have the numbers of people either. So I just look at it and go, well, what do you do when you have a bunch of criminals in your country who are, who are bad, who are doing bad things, who are willing to go in and kill people and attack a music festival? What do you do for those people? And what you do is you don't go bomb their city. You, you find them and you put them in jail. That's what we do here, or at least that's what we certainly try to do here. And I just, I think like a lot of people here, I am just amazed at this is being able to happen in front of our eyes. And I don't think that the world is being silent, but in our country, the silence is much too deafening. Well, thank you so much for putting this on the agenda.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who wishes to speak on this item?
Shelley Berman, Qatadi resident. I'll try not to cry for my three minutes. I am so grateful to be standing here. I am so grateful that you put this on the agenda. And I'm so grateful that the staff came up with a resolution so quickly. I'm not grateful that God decided to shut Zoom down, but apparently we have to do this twice because it's important and we need to hear it twice, three times, or however many times we have to hear it. And I also would like to add genocide to this resolution. The word genocide, because the part it to fall, Netanyahu said he was going to cut off water. He was in a cutoff energy source. He was going to cut food from coming into the area of Gaza, which to me amounts to a genocide. When you don't have fresh water, when you don't have access to food, when you don't have an energy source and then the bombs start coming, it appears to be a genocide or at least an ethnic cleansing. And I just heard that Israel has tried to find areas, countries in Africa who would be willing to take Palestinians and relocate them there. That is ethnic cleansing. And I too have relatives in Israel. And I too have a cousin in the military whose life is changed now. I saw him when he was a boy. I went to ballgames with this boy. He's not a boy anymore. He's a changed young man. And we all are. So thank you for taking this up. Thank you for your humanity. Thank you to all the humans in this room who came forward. And thank you to Rabbi Erwin Keller for your words and for, it brings me hope to be here and stand here before you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room like to make a public comment?
Hi, my name is Lena Rothman. I came here from Sebastopol tonight because I wanted to see how this would work tonight. But every day I put on the news or Democracy Now! and I see what's happening. Every day sobbing and I just can't, I can't get out of it. And I shouldn't get out of it. None of us should get out of it. Everyone should be watching what's going on in Palestine, Gaza right now because there's, there's no way that you could disguise it and make it look like it's a war. It's not a war. It's a genocide. And I'm Jewish and I grew up in a building in New York, in Brooklyn, and half my building were Holocaust survivors. And if I learned anything as a Jew, I've learned compassion and to see other Jews doing it, it is Israel and they are Jewish people. And it, I don't know how to feel good about that. I just, I feel ashamed and I hate it and I want it to stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room? I'd like to make a public comment. Kevin, it looks like we do have the ability now Zoom regained. So can we open it up to public comment on Zoom?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Sparks. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment on this item, please use the raise hand icon. We'll call them in order that we see the hands. The first name is Joan Meisel. You have the floor. Joan, if you're able to unmute your microphone, you will have your three minutes. One more time, Joan, are you able to unmute your microphone and make your public comment? We'll move on to the next commenter, but Joan, we will come back to you. The next name is Jeremy Galagos. Jeremy, if you're able to unmute your microphone, you will have your three minutes.
Hi there. My name is Maria Barakat. I am asking that the city of Qatadi please take, take a vote on pass this resolution. If not now, then as soon as possible, this is urgent. I appreciate the work of the city council and the staff, and I thank you so much for bringing this forward. Please don't let technical difficulties halt this impactful action that one city can take to send a message to the larger leadership of our state and to the national government to halt this genocide. Thank you.
The last hand, once again, Joan Meisel. If you're able to unmute your microphone, you have the floor.
I think we can, we can give it about maybe another 20 seconds or so, see if she can figure out to get her mic commuted.
Last call for Joan, are you able to unmute your microphone?
Okay, well, we're sorry we weren't able to hear from you. I think that will end public comment unless there are any other Zoom attendees.
That was the last hand raised, so Mayor Sparks, that'll end the comment.
Okay, thank you. At this point, normally we would open it up for council discussion, but since we're not going to take action on this tonight, I think the best thing to do would be to hold that discussion until after we're able to take public comment the next time we see this item. So we're going to continue this item to a future meeting and.
Clarify one thing, since it will be a continuation of the same item, people can't speak again on the item. Is that correct? So the same, so people who spoke tonight shouldn't make, I mean, it'd be great if you're here, but I just want to warn you, you won't have another three minutes next time. It's my understanding.
Is that accurate?
Yes, the general rules of the city are that each person gets three minutes on each item. And depending on how many people are here to speak at the next meeting, generally each person would not get to speak again.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just want to make sure people weren't expecting to come back and be able to speak again. So hence our notes.
We've taken notes on everything you've said and we've heard your, heard your comments. Sure.
I just wanted to ask there, given our agenda and the rules that are in place, there is no legal way for us to vote on this tonight? Is that correct?
So the agenda does state that the, that Zoom is provided as an option. It's provided as a courtesy to members of the public to participate. They are authorized, it specifically states that they can participate on Zoom. At this point, Zoom is now working again, although I do understand that Mayor Sparks, you did inform members on Zoom that they would be able to speak at the next meeting. At this point, it is, I will leave it up to the chair and to Mayor and to the council. If you would choose to continue with deliberations and a action on this item, you can consider that. I, I would generally, I think it is possible. But the issue is that people are authorized. They are allowed to participate on Zoom and we have already informed them that they would be able to make a comment on this item. So I might recommend a deliberation and you could discuss the item and ultimately decide to take action if you so choose.
Okay, we've had a comment. We've had, I'm so sorry, but it's not the time for a comment right now. So do you anticipate that there is any potential legal liability to the city where we do take action because we have some litigious citizens?
Yeah.
I would recommend that we take a, just short recess to have a discussion on this.
Okay, we're going to take a short recess. Okay, we're going to resume the meeting. Thank you for bearing with us. So after a new.
One more call for Joan, are you able to unmute your microphone?
All right, okay, that will, I'm so sorry, that will end public comment on that. So I'll open it up for discussion from the council, why don't we just start on this side?
Sure, so there was a few comments that I heard about language in the, in the resolution. And one of them was the release of all the hostages, captives. And I do see that written, I just wanted to call attention that it is written in the whereas it follows the, the UN Security Council resolution. It says, whereas December 12, 2023, oh, that they adopted the resolution. So that doesn't carry over to ours, is that something that's there, so that's not ours, right?
It's in our.
Be it further resolved.
The first be it further resolved does directly address that for us.
Release of all hostages, yeah, so it is addressed in here to release of all hostages. So that would include on both sides, right? Okay. That and also the other question that I felt that I heard was about genocide, adding genocide or ethnic cleansing. And I wasn't sure if I saw that in the resolution.
Can you speak to that?
Sure, yeah, the word genocide or ethnic cleansing is not in the resolution that's before you. At least from, you know, from staff perspective drafting it, that's, it seemed relatively subjective. So we didn't put it in the resolution that's before you tonight.
Councilmember Harvey, did you have any comments?
I guess my comments are that, you know, I really appreciate all this input, it was really very heartfelt. I can tell that everyone is really speaking from their hearts. And it's really hard to hear a lot of this, but I think it's, it's necessary. I'm okay with adding those things. And I think that one of the comments that really, really struck me the most, I think, is, is what, what Shelley said, you know? While we're, we're at a point where we can only do local things, that she said it brings her hope. And I, and I think that that kind of, for me, kind of sums it up, you know, little, little things that we can do that really gives us hope that we live in a world and that we can all, you know, kind of share this world that we have. So I am definitely in support.
Thank you. Either of you have comments?
Sure, so I'm fully in support of, of passing a resolution calling for an immediate and sustained ceasefire tonight. My, I have a lot of concerns with the, the nature of the resolution and, and its length. Because I think our, our only authority as a, as a local governing body is moral authority. We don't have any claim to be experts on foreign affairs or Mideast, or the Mideast or Israeli Palestinian conflict. And I worry that by including so much detail in the resolution, we give a lot of ammunition for anybody to dismiss it who disagrees with any particular whereas in there. I'm much, I would be, I would much rather we passed something more like Oakland's, which is very short and speaks to the values that we're trying to represent in such a resolution, calling for ceasefire, release of hostages. I think if we want the proposal to add the word genocide, while I may agree that what's occurring in Gaza fits my definition of a genocide, I don't, I don't claim expertise in that field. And I think that that provides, so, so if I envision a news story, then that will be the focus of the news story and invite a pushback on that narrative that what's happening is a genocide, rather than the conclusion, we, we ask our, our representatives and everybody in power to do everything they can to stop the violence now. And so I don't, so I have a proposed, you know, reworking that would strike a lot of the details and try to, try to reorder and stick to the, the wherashes that are about values and not about, not trying to lay out the history or, or any of the pieces that I think would reduce its impact by coming across as a city council of a tiny town in California that is pretending they're foreign policy expert. So I went after we make, if people are interested in that, I'm happy to sort of describe a reworking that I think would make it a lot pithier and a lot more values focused than, than detailed history.
Thank you, let's, let's give Councilmember Rivers a chance to talk and maybe we can revisit that.
So I, you know, worked on a version of this that did include the word genocide. And I do see some of my, my workings in here, which is great. But for me, the, the strongest part of this is the stanza about opposing all forms of antisemitism, Islamophobia, racism and bigotry. Another thing I included in it was another place where this is happening in Africa, because we seem to get a lot of attention when the people involved are white and not nearly as much attention when they are not. And so I actually had included that place in my version, which also is not here. So I just wanted to bring attention to that, I'm absolutely in support of the resolution. I'm happy to approve it as it is right now. And I want to thank the mayor and city manager and attorney for finding a way that we can make this vote tonight. Because I do feel like it is urgent and it is something that needs to happen now. And the legal and technological issues, I feel like, are not as important as getting this passed. The last thing I want to say is that, you know, I recognize we are not foreign affair, international experts, or at least I am not, I'll speak for myself. But, you know, a tiny town in California can at least express how our citizenry feels and what it is we think is important. And if this is what we can do, I want to do it.
Thank you, I'd like to hear from everyone on the council, what their thoughts are about hearing Vice Mayor Ford's shortened, reworked version. Is there, is there interest in exploring that? So can we just go one by one and see?
I'd be interested in entertaining and hearing what has.
Okay.
I would say no, but I'm outvoted, so go ahead.
And I am interested in hearing it as well, so let's, let's hear it.
So all the other resolutions that I can find, including the House resolution that's referenced in our resolution, begin with the phrase, whereas all human life is precious. So I want ours to start with that as well, current draft doesn't. So my proposed first whereas is the only new thing that I'm proposing added, which is whereas all life is precious and all suffering and loss of life through armed conflict is tragic. And, and then the, the fourth or fifth, sixth resolved in our current draft, I would pull up to a whereas, whereas the city of Qatadi opposes all forms of antisemitism, Islamophobia, racism and bigotry and advocates for the dignity and safety of residents in every community. I think that ought to be upfront and it ought to be taken as a given, not something we're deciding now. That's what a whereas is, it's just a statement of fact. So I think that's a whereas, not something we're actually deciding tonight. I would follow that with the whereas, that's whereas between October 7th and January 2nd, 2004, violence in and near Gaza has claimed the lives of approximately 22,000 Palestinians and over 1,200 Israelis, et cetera. All that, the text in that whereas, so stating the fact of toll of the violence so far. And whereas hundreds of thousands of, the one that immediately follows that, about hundreds of thousands of lives at imminent risk. And, and then my proposal is just to reference the UN General Assembly resolution, because the US has vetoed most of the more powerful Security Council statements. So the December 12, 2003 General Assembly resolution was passed over the United States' vote. The General Assembly can pass, the US doesn't have a veto in the General Assembly. So they passed a more powerful statement and that would be my, my only whereas about the, the UN statements. So that's five wherashes and then I would go into resolves, the first two be it resolved. And then permanent solution must be top foreign policy priorities. So I don't know if people caught that, but I could.
Can you repeat what, what your be it resolves would be?
Oh, that would be. The one that's, that's, yeah, sorry, the first two, now therefore be it resolved. City, city council, the city of Qatadi joins all these people calling for an immediate, I would add the word, permanent ceasefire. And then the second one, be it further resolved, that the city of Qatadi, I, this is a minor point. I would take the reference to HR 786 out because it was introduced in October and referred to committee and has not been seen action since then, it's buried in the House. So, so tying our resolution to that House resolution, I would probably leave it out, but I don't, that's fine to leave in. The city of Qatadi joins other cities and calling on congressional members, demand immediate ceasefire, release hostages, et cetera. And then the, my third one would be, be it further resolved that a permanent solution to this crisis must be one of the top foreign policy priorities of the US. And, and then the, the one about who gets copies of it have to stay. The ones that I'm proposing removing layout history, many facts about the history of the conflict. And while, while the, the narrative that's laid out in those wherashes comports with, with my understanding of the situation, I don't think that they add any power to our statement about what we think matters. I think they, they push it to the third page and they mean that, that it's, it's a whole lot of places where people can disagree with which facts we chose to include or which narrative we're trying to tell here, rather than getting to the point of, we want a ceasefire now, do something about it now. So that's my proposal to shorten. And I guess I'm making that as a motion to amend.
Would anyone like to second that motion?
I'm just having trouble just following that. So is it possible to just, like explicitly state either which ones are going out or which ones are staying in, so I can like do a star or something and see what this would look like at the end?
Okay, sure, yeah, I'll do that again. So the first one is an added one, whereas all life is precious and all suffering and loss of life through armed conflict is tragic. Then first whereas would be the one that is currently on page three as the second to last be it further resolved. So the one that, so it would be whereas the city of Qatadi opposes all forms.
Oh, okay. And this would now be the second whereas.
Right.
Okay.
And then the third whereas would be the one that, on the second page is whereas between October 7th and January 2nd.
Okay, that'd be the third.
Right.
Okay.
And the fourth would be whereas hundreds of thousands, right after that. And the fifth would be three above, whereas on December 12, 2023, no, not right, three above the last one.
Oh, so you move this one down?
Yeah.
To five?
To number five, yeah.
Okay.
That's all my proposed wherashes. And then the resolved, I would, I would remove the third and fourth ones.
So it would start the now therefore be resolved, that would be your first one?
Right, right, just like it is. Yeah, on the resolved. And then, so I would remove the third and fourth ones and the sixth one we turned into a whereas.
Okay, so therefore be, further resolved would be the sixth stanza, right? So what comes after that?
Oh, I see.
I'm just trying to see it all in sequence.
Right, we finished all the wherashes, now we're talking about the, right.
Yeah, so be it resolved, so numbers, so the, I'm just saying like, you know, how, how it would look, right? Like one, two, three, four, five, six, so if I just put them in order.
I'm not, I'm not on the microphone. So what I was asking is, I want to just see this in order. So like the first thing will be that additional one that you're asking to add. The second one would be turning this be it further resolved into a whereas. And then the third one would be the whereas between October 7th and January 2nd. The fourth would be whereas hundreds of thousands of lives. The fifth would be the December 12th. The sixth would start the be it resolved, which would be the one that says the city council and city of Qatadi joins the United Nations. So I'm just asking, what are the next ones?
Yeah, so it just goes in order, so the next be it further resolved would be what you're calling number seven.
Did the, the US Congress HR 786?
Uh, right, right.
Yes, so that's seven, okay.
And then skip two and be it further resolved that a permanent solution to the crisis would be my next one.
Okay.
And then the one about everybody who gets a copy.
So nine total. Looking at it correctly.
Sounds right, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that, we've got a lot to digest here. Is anyone on the council wanting to make a comment, whether they would like to see that go forward or second?
May I have a moment just to read through it and see what's being removed?
Sure.
Thank you.
Did the two of you, were you clear on all the changes or have any questions?
Yes. Oh, yeah, we'll concur over here.
Okay. Going to take a five minute study session here. Okay, so I think we've, we've all got the, the numbering written down. Need a few more minutes to look through it before we discuss or? Okay, we'll take about, we're just going to be quiet for a minute or two. Yeah.
So my, my question is, I feel like this is a pretty serious rewrite rather than an amendment. And I don't know if it's possible to have public comment on the amended suggestion or is that not appropriate? Because we've already had it.
Are we, is it all right to open public comment? I'm asking the city attorney.
There, my understanding is no, there's no legal reason to do it, but you're, I mean, there's a chair, you're welcome to open public, reopen public comment if you would like.
My, my, my question is just because it is so dramatic, I just want to make sure that there's nothing, you know, because like basically we'd be cutting one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14 of the stanzas. So I just want to make sure that there isn't something in particular that is like of critical importance, that if it's not in there, they don't want us to pass it, for example.
Sure. So what I would recommend is that I think we should have our discussion and see what the will of the council is. And then when we're getting closer to making a, a motion, then we can reopen the public comment. So folks have a chance to hear what we're thinking.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, does anybody want to speak?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I like the corrections. Usually in resolutions, you know, we put a lot of history in there. But I agree that there is so much in here that it, it does tend to kind of lose the point of where, where we're trying to get to. And that's to get to ultimately, you know, the, the actual, therefore be it resolved. And the shorter it is, the more apt that it will be recognized and looked at, I think by some of the, the folks that we want it to be looked at. I, I agree with what Vice Mayor Ford said, that when you have a whole lot in there, you know, after the first page, people kind of go, oh, I'm, you know, done with this and I, and I move on. So I think short and to the point gets more attention than something that goes on and on for pages. And so unless someone, you know, I, I don't claim to be the English teacher here. So if there's something that's of extreme importance to people that we need to add in, I'm, I'm okay with that. But as suggested, I think those are good, good changes.
You, Councilmember Lima's?
I was looking, now that I was able to piece the changes, I agree with it with a few changes that we discussed about, like in the new stanza six, which is a now therefore be it resolved, to change it for, to a permanent ceasefire. I think that's something that, that was discussed. But I think that it would be good for understanding, for the public to understand is that we can go through and maybe read the revised version of it, so people can kind of listen to it, make sure that some different points are in there.
Okay, we'll do that. See, Councilmember Rivers, did you have any comments on this?
Well, since I'm the one who said no, I'm glad I got outvoted because I feel like this was an important discussion and I, I do agree. I did want to open it up to public comment to, and I am the English teacher. But I, I would just like to make sure, like I said, that there isn't something that is taken out that is so critical that if it is removed, they would prefer we not pass it. And I feel that that's probably not the case, but I just want to make sure that that is true before approving it.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Ford, would you be willing to do a reading of the entire resolution with the amendments to it? And one more thing that was, I think, unsettled was whether to include the House resolution, the reference to the House resolution in one of the beer resolves? Yeah. So I, I personally would be in favor of keeping that because I think some of the language in that resolution was important to many of our constituents. But if, so maybe you could read it with that and we could make amendments to it as needed.
So just to clarify that, it is mentioned on what is now stanza seven, but you're suggesting to bring this, this on October 16th one back?
No, I was, I was just suggesting not to remove the House resolution because Vice Mayor Ford had mentioned he, he might wish to remember.
So you're saying to keep seven?
Just keep that.
Got it. Thank you.
Before I read it, I will point out that what I'm about to read is about four times the length of HR 786. So, and this is, this is the shortened version. Okay. So my proposal, and I'm, I'm, like I said, very much in favor of passing some, some statement calling for an immediate permanent ceasefire. Whereas all life is precious and all suffering and loss of life through armed conflict is tragic. And whereas between October 7th and January 2nd, 2024, violence in and near Gaza, sorry, I added a phrase there because it's now needed. So violence in and near Gaza has claimed the lives of approximately 22,000 Palestinians and over 1,200 Israelis and wounded thousands more. And according to the Ministry of Health in Gaza, an estimated 1,900,000 Palestinians, 85% of Gaza, have been internally displaced since October 7th. And whereas hundreds of thousands of lives are at imminent risk of death, famine, and life-threatening diseases in Gaza without a sustained ceasefire and unimpeded large-scale humanitarian relief. And whereas on, on December 12th, 2023, the UN General Assembly adopted a resolution in an emergency session demanding an immediate humanitarian ceasefire, the immediate and unconditional release of all hostages, as well as ensuring humanitarian access. And did I miss, did I miss the whereas about city of Qatadi opposes all forms?
Yeah, that was the second whereas, which should be the second whereas.
Second whereas, let me back up, was whereas the city of Qatadi opposes all forms of antisemitism, Islamophobia, racism, and bigotry and advocates for the dignity and safety of residents in every community. Now therefore be it resolved. So, sorry, I read that whereas out of order. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Qatadi joins the United Nations, world leaders, religious leaders, and citizens of the world everywhere in calling for an immediate permanent ceasefire and an end to all armed hostilities by all sides. And be it further resolved that the city of Qatadi supports US Congress Resolution HR 786 and joins other cities in calling on our congressional members to demand an immediate ceasefire, release of all hostages, the unrestricted entry of humanitarian assistance into Gaza, restoration of food, water, electricity, and medical supplies to Gaza, and respect for international law. And be it further resolved that a permanent solution to this crisis must be one of the top foreign policy priorities of the United States to reduce human suffering and promote peace in the region. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to, et cetera, et cetera. Yeah. That, that ends with urging them to take immediate action, to use their position and influence to end this conflict and work toward a permanent peace between Israel and the Palestinians.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes, there was two spots that it had immediate ceasefire and there was talk of having those be permanent.
Yeah, I did, I did put the word permanent, I thought, and I forgot to say it, in the first, now therefore be it resolved.
Okay.
Was there another place?
In the seventh one, the next one. Says calling on our congressional.
Okay. Yeah.
That was my.
Happy to have permanent in there too.
Okay. I just wanted to be consistent.
Councilmember Lima's?
Mine was the same comment, so Councilmember Harvey.
Councilmember Rivers, did you have anything?
No, I'm, I'm down. I just want to hear and make sure that the public is too.
Okay. I had one change that I forgot to mention, which is that I think we need to list our state senator as one of the recipients. It calls up the assembly member, but not state senator. Okay, I'd like to, before we go any further, I'd like to reopen public comment to give anyone a chance to comment on some of the changes that we've made, if you have anything you'd like to say. So if there's anyone in the room that would like to speak? Okay, come on up.
My name is Elaine Leader. I'm a resident of Qatadi. I'm also retired dean and professor at Sonoma State University. Two things, I totally agree with the proposal. However, I would like to say that you need to add something about calling out the actions of October 7th committed by Hamas for the trigger that has led this history and then the more recent trigger. And I think that would add a little more balance, although won't be balanced. The other thing is it does fit the definition. I taught Holocaust studies at Sonoma State and it does legally fit the term that the UN has set for the definition of genocide, which is the killing of an ethnic group of people by a government. So it fits the definition. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Other speakers? So we, yeah.
This isn't a hill I'm going to die on, but to your point about not wanting to include too much information that could be used to undermine this. I wasn't 100% sure if this was struck out already, but the part that talks about a two-state solution, I think that is a little bit of an overreach of us trying to recommend a policy. And I don't personally believe a two-state solution is going to work anymore. So, thank you.
Thank you. And that, I do believe that whereas was struck out already.
Hi, Adrian Lobby again. The genocide definition, yes, I've heard several experts who spent their whole lives in studying and legalizing that this is genocide. The guy on NPR said, we either, all of my colleagues either call it a genocide or believe it is an imminent genocide. I would really, really appreciate it if you would put a clause in here about stopping military aid. I think that is our duty as humans in the US right now. And I'm sorry to see that it wasn't in the original proposal. I'd like to see it in this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from folks in the room? Kevin, can we open up for Zoom? Oh, I saw one more, one more person.
Sorry, a comment on the genocide and on restricting military aid. I prefer that, I prefer that those were not in the resolution. I can also get people with definitions of genocide that this would not at all qualify. The military aid, if you're going to talk about military aid, restricting military aid, then I think we need to start talking about Hamas embedding all of their military and civilian infrastructure so that when Israel does go and attack Hamas, there's civilians all around it. So I, I agree with what Councilmember Ford was saying. I think we need to keep this more in line with what Councilmember Ford just read. That doesn't invite so much, so much of an ability to diminish the effect of this resolution. This thing, it's, you know, one-sided in this direction or it's missing this. I think a more straightforward, like what was read would be the appropriate way to go.
All right, thank you for your comment. All right, Kevin, can we please, the Zoom public comment?
Thank you, Mayor Sparks. Once again, speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you would like to make a public comment on this item, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Sparks, that'll end public comment.
All right, thank you. Do you have any further questions from the council? And if not, I'd be looking for a motion.
I'm just looking at even the original one and although I know it was in the one that I, I was working on with some community members, I don't see anything in here about ending military aid, even the one that was originally here. It doesn't look like it, it had it either. Is that accurate? Okay.
Manager Obed, can you remind me, was there a mention of military aid in the House resolution that's referenced?
Not to my recollection, no.
I think it's in here, isn't it? Yeah, here.
Yeah, the House resolution is pretty short.
Yeah, yeah, there's none, right. It's just ceasefire.
Okay.
Yeah, the House resolution doesn't mention military aid, interestingly.
Okay. Can I propose one slight change to what I read in response to one of the comments that? So the third whereas that I read was whereas between October 7th and January 2nd, violent in and near Gaza, et cetera. And I'm proposing that that read instead, whereas between the Hamas attack of October 7th and January 2nd, October 7th, 2023, and January 2nd, 2024, violence in and near Gaza has claimed the lives of, to, to have a reference to the October 7th Hamas attack that began the current intent.
Thank you. If there's a desire from the council to include the word genocide somewhere in the resolution, I'd be looking for someone to make a suggestion on where that ought to go. And if not, then I'd be looking for a motion on the whole resolution.
I would move that we pass this resolution with the changes that were just suggested by, by Smear Ford.
I have a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Just so we're clear, we're moving the resolution as was read by Council, or by Vice Mayor Ford with the change that you just mentioned. Can you clarify?
Yeah, and I'm wondering, do you want me to read the whole thing again?
I think we better, just because we're about to vote on it.
All right.
And you better get that whereas in the red spot.
All right, I'll try this. Whereas all life is precious and all suffering and loss of life through armed conflict is tragic. And whereas the city of Qatadi opposes all forms of antisemitism, Islamophobia, racism, and bigotry and advocates for the dignity and safety of residents in every community. And whereas between the Hamas attack of October 7th, 2023, and January 2nd, 2024, violence in and near Gaza has claimed the lives of approximately 22,000 Palestinians and over 1,200 Israelis and wounded thousands more. And according to the Ministry of Health in Gaza, an estimated 1,900,000 Palestinians, 85% of Gaza, have been internally displaced since October 7th. And whereas hundreds of thousands of lives are at imminent risk of death, famine, and life-threatening diseases in Gaza without a sustained ceasefire and unimpeded large-scale humanitarian relief. And whereas on, on December 12th, 2023, the UN General Assembly adopted a resolution in an emergency session demanding and quote, "immediate humanitarian ceasefire," close quote, the immediate and unconditional release of all hostages, as well as quote, "ensuring humanitarian access." Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Qatadi joins the United Nations, world leaders, religious leaders, and citizens of the world everywhere in calling for an immediate permanent ceasefire and an end to all armed hostilities by all. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Qatadi joins the United Nations, world leaders, religious leaders, and citizens of the world everywhere in calling for an immediate permanent ceasefire and an end to all armed hostilities by all sides. And be it further resolved that the City of Qatadi supports US Congress Resolution HR 786 and joins other cities in calling on our congressional members to demand an immediate permanent ceasefire, release of all hostages, the unrestricted entry of humanitarian assistance into Gaza, the restoration of food, water, electricity, and medical supplies to Gaza, and respect for international law. And be it further resolved that a permanent solution to this crisis must be one of the top foreign policy priorities of the United States to reduce human suffering and promote peace in the region. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to Sonoma County Supervisors, the mayors and council members of each of its incorporated cities, California State Assembly Members, Senators, and Governor, and United States Representatives, Senators, Vice President, and President, urging them to take immediate action to use their position and influence to end this conflict and work toward a permanent peace between Israel and the Palestinians.
All right, thank you. There's a motion and a second. Kevin, I'm going to ask that you take a roll call vote for this, please.
Councilmember Rivers.
Why do I always have to go first? So this number seven, end to military aid, could very easily slip in to release of all hostages, comma, end to military and aid, comma, the unrestricted entry of humanitarian assistance into Gaza. You know, I feel like I wasn't done discussing it.
We can delay the vote since we haven't had anyone vote yet and open that for a moment to discuss if you'd like. But we do have a motion and a second, so what you could do is you could propose an amendment to the motion.
Okay, well, I would like to propose an amendment or to at least have a discussion on whether or not we would like to include end to military, a call for the end to military aid, and I feel like it could very easily fit in that list of the be it further resolved that the City of Qatadi supports US Congress and joins other cities in calling on congressional members to demand, and then that list of things to include an end to military aid.
Yeah, Councilmember Levis?
Well, I was thinking, I was going to bring up also in that other section, number two, where it says the City of Qatadi opposes all forms of antisemitism, Islamophobia, racism, bigotry, that we can add genocide, that we can put genocide in there. So it's more of a, in a general statement.
Did you get what that was?
I support both of those.
What, okay, so we have two different changes. One is to add the word genocide, and one is to add the withholding military aid. Where's their support for the military aid?
I'd like
Can those be on the same amendment?
Yeah, yeah, they could be. So the reason I would have trouble adding military aid to that is because military aid to Israel is also tied up with Israel's right to defend itself, and that is a whole other discussion that I think would sideline the effect of this resolution in calling for a ceasefire. That's while like, if we want to, if we want to sort of do a more general resolution about US foreign policy towards Israel that includes supporting the end of military aid, that would fit, but, but it doesn't fit to me here because of the, all the issues that touches on that aren't the ceasefire and the current Palestinian-Israeli conflict. I just like, one of our commenters, you know, commented on that issue, that if we start, if we pull in military aid, I mean, we could say, end to military aid, supporting the current Gaza hostilities, or something like that. If we want to, we want to make it more targeted and say, you know, end military aid that's used in the current conflict in Gaza, or something like that. Because otherwise, we're expanding way beyond the Gaza current military offensive, and that's problematic to me.
Councilmember Harvey?
Well, and once we give military aid, you're suggesting that we, you know, narrow it down, but I don't know that we have any control over that. Once you give it, it gets used. You know, kind of how it's used, it's not like someone's standing there saying, oh, you're going to do this. Well, here's, you know, X number of dollars, you're going to do that. It just goes. So I do have concerns with that.
If anyone would like to propose an amendment to the motion, this would be the time to do it. Otherwise, we're going to, just procedurally, that's how we change what we're about to vote on, is someone needs to propose a specific amendment, and then it needs to get a second.
Okay, so I propose that we amend the amended resolution to make two additions for what has become the seventh stanza would change to release of all hostages, comma, end to military aid, comma, the unrestricted entry of humanitarian assistance. And nothing else changes in that one. And then in the what would be the second, whereas would add to this list of, you know, Islamophobia, comma, racism, genocide, comma, and bigotry.
Would anyone like to second that motion?
I'll second the motion.
I'd like to divide the question, take those two separate.
Okay, any council member can request that. So we will divide the motion. The first half will be, let's just deal with the addition of the word genocide first, because it was just a single-word addition, right? Okay, so we're going to take a roll call vote on the motion to add the word genocide first.
And just to clarify for the minutes, this motion is made by Councilmember Rivers?
Yes, it was made by Councilmember Rivers and seconded by Councilmember Levis, and then we are taking the two parts of the motion separately.
Councilmember Rivers?
Aye.
Councilmember Levis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ford?
Yes.
Mayor Sparks?
Yes.
Okay, so that passes unanimously. Then we are going to take the second half of the motion. I'm so sorry, can you repeat? What is it, just so we're clear?
Yes, so the, what would, what is now the seventh stanza, be it further resolved that the City of Qatadi supports US Congress Resolution HR 786 and joins other cities in calling on our congress members to demand an immediate, permanent ceasefire, release of all hostages, end to military aid, the unrestricted entry of humanitarian assistance into Gaza, the restoration of food, water, electricity, and medical supplies to Gaza, and respect for international law.
Okay, thank you. So again, this was a motion by Councilmember Rivers, seconded by Councilmember Levis, and we'll do a roll call vote on that portion.
Councilmember Rivers?
Aye.
Councilmember Levis?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
No.
Vice Mayor Ford?
No.
Mayor Sparks?
I'm going to vote no, and I would like the opportunity to explain my vote, which is that I do believe that the more we wade into dictating specific policy solutions, the more there's room, as Councilmember Ford discussed, or Vice Mayor Ford discussed, that there's room for people to nitpick and disagree with, with portions of this. And although I personally agree with the end to military aid, I think our resolution is stronger if we leave it out. So that's why I'm voting no. Okay, so now we've dealt with the amendment to the original resolution. We're going to take a roll call vote on the resolution itself, which I don't think we need to read again. I think we're clear on what it is. Okay, so we'll do one more roll call vote.
Councilmember Rivers?
Aye.
Councilmember Levis?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ford?
Yes.
Mayor Sparks?
Yes.
I want to thank everybody so much for participating. I think it's an incredible thing for us to have this space where we can all come together and discuss this together. So thank you for being here. I'm making your voices hurt. Okay, we're going to move on to the city manager's report. Actually, we're going to take a five-minute recess bathroom break. All right, thank you.
I am, I just like, I still have this, when I, when I go
Next time we talk, we're going to change it. Which is very interesting. So that also, and I couldn't get up because So that also, and I couldn't get up because Sidson's business was shut down.
Okay, I think we're all here, so we can restart the meeting. The next item on the agenda is the city managers' report.
Yes, so now for something completely different. And I'll keep this pretty short tonight, for real, this time. So just a heads up that we have some items coming to, coming forward that just thought would be of somewhat, somewhat of interest to people. Planning Commission's going to be seeing Sunbelt Rentals Use, it's a equipment rental yard out at, on Redwood Drive, off of Redwood Drive, that use permit. Application's going to the Planning Commission on the 16th of this month, I believe. We do expect to, we've been bidding the gateway signs, we expect the awards for those. And these are the post-mounted signs, not the monument signs, expect those to be coming forward here at the second meeting in January. Kattati Village One is currently expected to happen in February, so Planning Commission in February. So that's the, for those of you that maybe don't know the name, because they change the names regularly, that's the development on the corner of Alder and, proposed development on the corner of Alder and 116. And we're also working on the mid-year update, which is, there's a lot of associated financial updates that go along with that. The mid-year update audit, financial updates, as I said, January, February. Just a couple of quick things on rec, we have a Kids Night Out coming up. And that's, it's posted on our website, if anyone's curious on our headlines. And then also, we have our annual Kattati Valentine Day Gram program, where people can purchase Valentine Day grams, and haven't delivered to any person or business in, in the city of Kattati. And that's, of course, that'll happen on February 14th. Information for that is also on our website, if anyone is interested in that. And like I said, I'm keeping it short, so that's it for tonight. Except for Happy New Year's.
Thank you very much. Next would be our city council member reports. Does anyone have a report? Yeah?
Sure, yeah, I had, there was a Sonoma Clean Power Meeting that I wasn't able to attend, but I did show up in the beginning just to make sure they had quorum, because I had a 9:30 meeting, the Sandage on your fourth. So the Kel City's Policy Committee on Environmental Quality, there was an introductory meeting on the fourth, I attended with Zoom, which was nice, but it's in preparation for our meetings that start January 19th. And that's, again, for policy on air-water, water quality, climate change, CEQA, integrated waste management, hazardous materials, coastal energy utilities. So it's a whole body of work that I'd be learning, but asking them to prioritize so that we can make sure we work on priority policies that we're interested in. So maybe I'll reach out to staff and see what items that they would like me to bring up at the policy meetings that are starting. And then earlier, Councilmember Rivers and I went to the Kattati Chamber of Commerce. So if she wants to add anything that I missed, but there will be some activities coming up. There's the Kattati Music Festival, June 8th. There will be information to support Restaurant Week, Kattati Restaurants, and a business showcase in mid-April, maybe around April 27th, I'm not sure yet. And anything else that Councilmember Rivers would like to add? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Harvey?
Not much, got lots of meetings got canceled. But the one that is kind of of importance to this group is, we had a meeting on the GSAs. There was a request by Supervisor Rabbit and Supervisor Goran to, to combine the Sonoma Valley and Petaluma Valley and Santa Rosa Plain GSAs, because they have been subsidizing those two so that their fees come down to the same ones that are in Santa Rosa. And so they wanted to just spread the fees across so that everybody paid equal amounts, so that they didn't have to subsidize anymore. Anyways, we had a whole afternoon discussion on that, and the bottom line is that you cannot charge for things that you don't get benefit from. So that was a very long discussion, but that is the, the key point there. So you, it, it's not, while it's possible to take the administrative costs that everybody has the same, and to spread those out amongst the three, which they're already doing a lot of combining of services there, we cannot take the projects that are in the, the three plains and kind of spread it out amongst everybody. So it took a while for others to get that message, but hopefully it will die down again. And we won't hear that again, but you never know. The December Waste Management Agency meeting was canceled, and the January LAFCO meeting was canceled, and the SCTA meeting was canceled, so that's all I got.
Right, thank you. Councilmember Ford?
My only meeting since our last meeting was the Restaurant River Water Tribe Association did its annual report to the Regional Water Quality Control Board, which the, the Vice Chair of the Water Quality Control Board told me afterwards that it was a great way to end their two days of tough, tough meetings, to hear all these inspiring stories about things that RRWA and some other, some other partners of the, of the Water Quality Control Board do. Good session.
Great. Councilmember Rivers, do you have anything to report?
Yeah, and I apologize, I'm failing to find my notes from the meeting. I think I might have left them on my desk at school. But, and that's the two-by-two-by-two meeting, but fortunately, Mayor, you are also there. So hopefully you can comment on the really extraordinary presentation that they did for us. I did also have the, you know, Fourth Wednesday of the month. We did have the Coffee with Kay, which was well-attended, which was pretty cool. There was also a Rotary Holiday Party that I went to, that was pretty fun. And I won some interesting stuff that was fun, that I got to then, you know, pay forward in other holiday gift-giving events later. And then I also did go with Sylvia, or Sylvia and I both went to that. The one other thing they did mention was Oktoberfest. And granted, that's like, pretty far into the future, but the last two had had to be canceled. And so we were talking about ways of potentially making that happen again and bringing that back.
Also, board members, the Kattati Chamber of Commerce board members. So if anyone out there is interested, they need more board members.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, and yes, I also attended the Two-by-Two Education Committee meeting, and we had an amazing presentation by, I believe, the founder and guy in charge, his title of Youth Transforming Justice, which is a restorative justice program that used to be called Youth Courts, where within schools, mainly junior high schools and high schools, the students who otherwise would be suspended are diverted into this youth court instead, where it's a peer-led restorative justice program that has astonishingly good success rates. But it is extremely dependent on execution, on being executed in a really specific way. And the guy who came in and presented to us had a, a really specific template that works really well and has been proven to work. And so there was a lot of discussion in the, the meeting about that we need to get this visible to the Board of Supervisors as something that needs support and funding, because with some of the violence that's gone on in other schools throughout the county, the public opinion is swinging towards harsher discipline and more suspensions. And, and if we, if we want to retain some of the equity gains that have been made, we need to have an alternative form of discipline that works, that, 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 that people can get behind. And so we were going to invite, we let that meeting resolve to invite Board of Supervisors that, that represent Runt Park and Kattati to our next two-by-two meeting, and to try to repeat the presentation for them, and, and see, see what kind of motion we can get on it. Okay, um, see, that's it for city council member reports. Now we need to do public comment on any non-action agenda items. So if there's anyone in the public that would like to comment on the Pledge of Allegiance, or anything else on the agenda that was not an action item, yeah, go ahead and come on up, thank you.
Hi, my name's Amber Myers, and I'm a resident of Kattati. I have been for 22 years, and have bought my second home in Kattati. I am going to be greatly affected by the new development of the 35 homes that they're proposing on Old Redwood Highway. In addition to that, so backtracking to the first meeting, it was shocking enough to hear that we were going from living next to one house on seven acres to five, five or 10 houses, to then it was 20 houses, now it's 35 houses, now we just threw in 35 more ADUs. So we're talking about 70 homes that will be built next to my house. The reason why I bought this house, because as most people do who own properties that are two or three or four, whatever, five acres, is for a few various reasons, but I think we all know what most of them are. As far as just like, whether for me personally, it was the quiet, because I work with children. When I get home, I just need like total silence, which you as a teacher may understand. And I've been teaching for 30 years, so that's part of it. I also have farm rescue animals, and I'm just wondering how my foster pigs are going to be doing next to a fence with a whole bunch of homes that have no yards. And I also want to mention that two-story homes will be looking into my two-acre yard, and they're being homes are being built with no yard whatsoever. And I just think it's going to be a very unpractical situation. We also have a shop on our property, which we don't do anything loud and obnoxious at this moment. But what is the purpose of having a shop on your property if you can't actually use it for, for some purpose? Which I feel like will be extremely limited. And then also, I want to just bring up too, there was the issue with the salamander, the, make sure I'm saying it right, white tiger salamander, did I get it right? Anyone know what I'm talking about? Thank you. So as that, they're supposed to be replacing that property, that land, equal value, if they are going to develop on that, so I just want to also make sure that's being followed through. It was heartbreaking to watch all the trees come down, because of course, all the animals scattered, you know, and lost their homes on that one property. Not to say that that's what it was for, I understand. But it's, it's something I think, we also talked about at the first meeting regarding the issue of water, you know, we're always constantly being told that we're in a drought. And it's like, all these homes are being built, there's no consideration for, like, there was no answer, there was no actual answer. I don't want to keep stop not flushing my toilet, because my neighbors are all panicking and freaking out if there's not a proper plan for water in place. I feel like it's similar to
30 seconds.
what Newsom is pushing as far as like all, you know, electric cars, when we don't really have an answer as to how that's actually going to work in the future. There's no, there's still a lot to be answered, and it's not being answered. And yet we're making decisions. It's similar to my best friend, by the way, is the one who bought, or has the home that has the ADU and the junior ADU, which I believe was the first one placed in Kattati. And I can tell you, it's very frustrating, because there is no parking whatsoever over in that, on that street. So I don't know how that was missed, but I think that's very unfair that that was done to all the other neighbors so that one person could profit, which, like I said, is my best friend. So we're still best friends to this day, but she knows how I feel, which is completely
I'm so sorry, with the time's up, if you could finish it up?
Yep, so that, that's it. I just, I will be back at the next meeting. I did take off work for this meeting, and I will arrange to take off work for the next meeting as well.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure, yeah, so it sounds like you know we're continuing to next meeting. And you're also welcome to, we've all heard you, so if you, if it's inconvenient for you, you're also welcome to submit written comment.
Yeah.
And not have to take off work again. All right, can we open up to Zoom?
Thank you, Mayor Sparks. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you would like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. We do have one hand. Lori, you have the floor.
Hi, I was wondering a couple things. I, I, because of the Zoom, is the pink Viking continued? Is it going to be re-noticed? The other thing is, I, I, really sort of not knowing what's going on with the projects in Kattati, like what, why the, the, sorry, the 1.6 million, the city bought the real estate at La Plaza View. There's like, there's nothing on the update of what's happening with the mobile home park, all that kind of stuff. I'd like to see some of these issues on the agen, agenda too, once it directly affect Kattati. Thank you, bye.
Can, City Manager Obi, can you address the, the question about the re-noticing?
So the item was continued to a date certain, to the next council meeting, so re-noticing is not required.
Okay.
That's the question about what was referred to as Pink Viking, it's now called Flahaven Estates.
Okay, so the re-noticing is not required, but it will be, the hearing will be continued to the next meeting. Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Sparks, that'll end the public comment.
Okay, thank you. Information received after the agenda was posted, was there any information?
There was, there were, I believe, a total of six public comments received regarding the ceasefire resolution. Those were all updated to the HTML agenda and available here in print in the chamber tonight, as well as some edits to the resolution and staff report for item 9B, which has now been continued as well to January 23rd. Thank you.
All right, thank you. With that, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much.